I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the fair and righteous citizens in this beautiful peninsula, united by her great sea of life, where we live our community and justice for all, in the heart of the deal.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House of Members Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mineheart?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Here. Yes, we're here. We've been on break. It's been so long.
Okay. We need an approval of the agenda, but I think we have some updates this evening, right, Marcus?
We do, Mayor, Members of the City Council. There's just one update. We would like to add, under Communications, a request to close a parking lot on behalf of the Lions Club. And we could just add that as the last communication.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the agenda with that amendment.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Bowman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mineheart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. We do ask if you come forward that you state your name, and then if you would also write your name and your address for the city clerk. That's always very helpful. And if you could limit your comments to three minutes, we would appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is David, Dave Reiser, R.E.I.S.E.R., I think that's how I spell it. I live here in Cadillac. And I'm here to discuss some item on the agenda, Item 8, Resolutions and Ordinances. Last Friday evening, I had the pleasure of attending the ceremony whereby the ribbons were caught and the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion was rededicated. And I was very pleased and proud to be in attendance to that. And I thought how fortunate we here in this area are that we have people with vision who see what an important jewel that is in the Crown of Cadillac, and that it needed attention. And I want to pay tribute to Councilmember Bowman and City Manager, Mr. Pescha, for their leadership, their perseverance, their dedication and their leadership. And I also think that we're very grateful to the Rotary here in Cadillac and other generous benefactors who stepped forward and protected a very valuable asset of the community. But I think there's another very important asset that needs protecting, and that's our city street system. And I think about a year ago or so, I approached the council discussing the need for paying attention to the deterioration of our road system, and I suggested a possible source of revenue for that. So I was very pleased to see that on the agenda tonight is a possible solution to that problem. The roads are so critically important to everybody in the community. Not everybody gets to use that beautiful Performing Arts Pavilion, but everybody who lives in town, who works in town, shops, travels through, we all use that street system. We use it to go to work. We use it to go shopping. We use it to go to education. We use it to go to recreation. We use it to go to hospital care. We use it to distribute illegal drugs. Everybody, no matter their class, uses this street system, and it must be protected. And I have a kind of a vested interest because as I enter my ninth decade, I know that pretty soon I'll be taking that last trip to Boot Hill, and I don't want to be spilled on my way up there. So I was very pleased to see this proposal, and I think it was very innovative, I think it's creative, I think it was a great way to approach the solution, and I encourage you to support that. The only reservation I have is I hope that if this passes, that we don't become rather compliant and say, "Well, we solved the problem." I think there will continue with the problem. I hope you look for other innovative forces. I think the administrative staff did a great job of coming up with a possible solution. And I'm here to encourage all of you councilmembers to approve this resolution tonight. And I'm sorry that I can't stay for the rest of the meeting, but I promised Mr. Pescha and Miss Honium that I would be working on these FOIA requests, and I'm not done yet. So I gotta go home and work on that. But I'll be watching you on your illegal cable public access channel to see that you vote, and I encourage you to vote. And I thank you for listening to me, but more importantly, I thank you for your dedication, your care, and your service to our community. I'm very grateful for that. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council, Mr. Pescha. My name is Morris Langworthy, Jr. I want to be your next day representative. I bring with you this evening three things that I find close to my heart, and that is, one, I want the same things that you want, a better way of life for the people of the city of Cadillac. Two, better way of life for the people of the 102nd District. Why? I work in Cadillac. My wife works in Cadillac. My son works in Cadillac. Cadillac is the place that we call home when we're not home, because this is where we spend the most of our time. It means a lot to me to take care of the one place I've donated a lot of my volunteer time, as well as getting to know and work with a lot of people in the city over the last 25 years. Since I've come home from the military, this is where I work, and this is where I've called my place of business. I want to continue to improve our way of life here in Cadillac, just as much as you do. Please consider me when voting on August 2nd, and if you ever have any questions of me, feel free to call me. My cell number is on literature. Close my home phone. I have a website and a Facebook page. Don't hesitate to call me. Bottom line is, is as much as we want transparency and accountability, we still have to have accessibility. I will make myself available to you at any time. Feel free to give me a call if you have any questions or concerns. With that, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
My name is Trent Taylor, and I'd like to be your next Wexford County Sheriff. I'm a lifelong Wexford County resident, born and raised on the 200 block of East Bremmer. I live out in the county now, but a fourth-generation resident. I worked in Cadillac. I grew up here. Went to Cadillac High School. Upon graduating from there, I went to Ferris State University. Have a bachelor's in criminal justice. During my career, I went back to graduate school, and I had a master's in public administration. I also proudly served in the United States Marine Corps Reserve and the United States Naval Reserve as a fighting CB over here at the USS Cadillac, the finder docked on Chestnut Street, and that was my duty statement for that. Learned a lot about myself and duty, honor, commitment during my time in the military. You know, commitment to something greater than self. There's a long history of service in my family. My father was a Cadillac police officer. I have one brother that was a Cadillac police officer, a brother that was a deputy for the sheriff's office, something near and dear to me. I just limited a lot of time. A lot of things I want to say. I'm gonna pass all literature. It has my website on it. You can please go there and read Sir Robert Peale's Nine Principles of Policing. You'll find out where my core values in law enforcement are at, community policing, partnerships, forming a close relationship with the Cadillac PD. As Councilmember Wolfisle knows, we've great working relationship over the years. I have a strong relationship with your current chief, personal and professional, and I believe that we can form even stronger partnerships in going forward and keeping Cadillac and Wexford County safe. Like I said, community policing is a very important aspect of my philosophy, a customer-based organizational philosophy. I'm gonna cut her short tonight, because I know you've got a lot to talk about, but please, I'll leave my literature, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, and I ask for your vote on August 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Give me one second there, young man. Okay, there you go.
Says he's not going. Hi, everybody. My name's Anthony Beden. I'm the Wexford County Prosecutor. I'm not here to politic tonight, and I'm gonna join Mr. Reisner. First of all, I want to thank you for having a relationship with the prosecutor's office and allowing us to enforce your criminal ordinances and your zoning ordinances. I was forewarned that Mike Coy and Cindy Cornell and Pam Klipman, like Marcus, would be hard to get along with. That's not true. I'm proud to announce. I did the same thing about Sherry, and that's not true. And I want you all to know that, because that's really important to our office. I'm really, really proud that we've been able to work with the zoning thing to clean up some of the messes around town. And I know it's a sight-by-sight thing. I talked to Pam virtually every week, and that's been going really well. But what I really want you to know is, I was down in the park over the weekend, and I was sitting there looking around in the fountain and the trees, and I had a thought. And before I could say that thought to anybody, some little kid walked up to me and said, "Isn't this just like Disney?" And it does kind of mimic the little small-town USA that Disney has. So I have to tell you that, as a citizen, as a resident, as a parent, as a prosecutor, I really, really appreciate all the efforts that you went through to clean stuff up. And I don't say that lightly. You tore down my office, you know? I was there for 27 years, and I thought I would miss it. I don't. You did a good job. Thank you very, very much for allowing us to serve as your criminal enforcement arm, if you will. I hope that continues the next four years. Thank you.
I've never done this before. Be patient. My name is Brenda Stowinski, and I've been trying to find out who Nancy from Maideville, Michigan, Artesian Farm Market answers to. Nancy banned me last Thursday from being a participant down at our little art thing every week. There was never any rules put on paper and passed out, so if I broke one, I didn't know I had. Reason she gave me, there was three of them. She didn't like the way I spoke to her. Well, I may have spoke a little harsh, but I confronted her because she is charging one person one price, the next person another price, and the next person another price. That ain't fair to any of us factors. I liked what I did, but I want myself and the entire group to be treated fair. So if you're gonna charge one person one price, you need to charge that entire group the same price. Two, this one was kind of funny. This is the one that actually kind of upset me. That particular day, I had a 13-week-old kitten I just adopted that Tuesday, and I had to bring her with me because I have a Siberian. You don't leave a Siberian with a kitten. And the kitten was on a leash, and I also had to tow food and water for it. And she told me it was against Michigan state law for me to have this kitten down there. Well, I went investigating. I talked to the administrating office, the city police, the sheriff department, prosecuting attorney, and the state officers. There was no rules in that that says I cannot have a kitten on a leash. The third one was because I left early. There are several people that leave early. Matter of fact, that morning, a gentleman had come in, sat up, couldn't have been there more than an hour, hour and a half, packed his stuff up and left, and he was there the following Thursday. So I feel she is not treating us all equal, and I know that sometimes me or you may not get along, but you gotta do the best you can. And if there's gonna be rules put in place, they need to be put on paper and handed out, and make sure that every person understands these rules, and maybe even have them sign it. She needs to hand out receipts when we pay her whatever it is for that day. I feel that there, I don't feel that if a rule is broken, then she needs to come to us and say, "Hey, you broke this rule. It was written down here. You broke this rule. So let's talk about why you broke the rule and give a warning." You don't just throw them out because they brought a kitten, or they left early, or you didn't like something they said. That's not how you run a business, in my book. And I'm not even following what I wrote, I guess. But the point is, I think each person, not just myself, I've been banned already, which I'd love to go back. But if she does this to me, she could do it to the next person. So I'm here, not only on my behalf, but the entire group. If you're gonna have rules, put it on paper.
Thank you, Mrs. Stowinski. We've got a time limit of three minutes. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment. And at this time, we need to approve the consent agenda, which this evening consists of the meetings minutes from our regular meeting on June 20th, along with the closed Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Johnson.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mineheart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, this evening, we have a proclamation that I'm going to read, and then I believe we have some folks here who would like to do a brief presentation to the council after the proclamation. Whereas Oscar Peely-Petersen, 1888 to 1951, was a resident of Cadillac, Michigan for over 55 years. And whereas Oscar Peely-Petersen was active carving wood spearfishing decoys used by local sportsmen for harvesting fish to feed their families. And whereas Oscar Peely-Petersen's one-of-a-kind fish decoys, as well as a limited number of duck decoys, plaques, vases, bowls, trade signs, and other exceptional works of art that are highly sought after by collectors worldwide, and his fish decoys are so unique, they have been named the Cadillac Style Decoys. And whereas his artwork is featured as highlights of numerous auctions, decoy shows, and books written for and by decoy collectors. His fish decoys sell for between $500 to $18,000 each. There are collectors whose collections are valued at over $1 million, and he has a plaque that was sold at Southbury Auctions for over $100,000. And whereas there are over 50 past and current carvers in the Cadillac area that are carving in the Cadillac style, keeping Oscar Peterson's passion for hand-carved, one-of-a-kind pieces of artwork available to the public. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Carla J. Folkin, Mayor of the city of Cadillac, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday in June as Oscar Peterson Day in Cadillac, Michigan. And I believe we have Al Nelson here.
I'm Al Nelson. Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. I was born and raised in Cadillac, and my family were good friends of Oscar Peterson. And the relationship was very simple. He was a landscaper. My dad had a truck, and they interacted with one another. My older brothers were used to help load and unload the trucks, and they got to know Oscar, and they watched him make decoys. And so we got into the decoy-making business at an early age, in around 1938, and we continue on today. And I am a product of the community. I was born and raised over on the west side of Cadillac on Donley Street 72 years ago. I've lived here all my life. I'm a product of the community. I spent 34 years working here for the city of Cadillac as a police officer and retired. I've seen and heard a lot of our comments, but I want to tell you people that it was an honor and a privilege to work for you. It really and truly was. It was a great experience, and I want to convey that to you on behalf of my family. I've heard a lot of criticism of you people, but to me, it was a great experience and one I would gladly do over. But to get back to what we're talking about, was we wanted to create a day where we could educate people a little bit more about Oscar and what he did and what he has created. And it was the Cadillac Style Decoy. When we talk of the Cadillac, it's the way the decoy was made and how it swims, and this is, I'm gonna pass one of Oscars around, and somebody's like, "Why don't you take a look at them and feel them?" And this is a form of art that's unique to Cadillac. The largest city in the nation has it. As we travel around the Shoals, this is the bench of art. It is, whenever any of these are at the Shoal, that is the center of what is being discussed and what is being sought out. Right now, if I had a decoy like one of these here, it was in as good a shape, I could make a phone call, and tomorrow, there would be an airplane landing at the airport to pick it up. I mean, there's that, people that are out there after these, and they're spending big bucks around so. We want to recognize him. There's other people that are in the picture, but it's mainly Oscar started it, and this is sort of a timeline over 100 years of people who lived in this community. And matter of fact, right where you sat on this street, the continuation of Mason Street, this was where some of the nicest spears in Michigan were made, right in the blacksmith shop, right in the area where you sat. And these people walked the streets here, and they sold the products for a living to support their livelihoods. And as it went on, it's developed into an art form, and I recognize it as that. I always thought it very urgent. So I wanted to pass this mantle. I don't want it to die. And I think I want somebody to carry on with it. So I want kids to be, if people make them 100 years from now and in Chilean, and I want the community to recognize it and to use this. There's people who will come here, and I want to give enough information out. If somebody comes up from Chicago, a collector, where he can find this information and some of this stuff in one of our objectives to put these up around town by Guinness, the Hall, the library, the museum, Old Carlton Johnson. So people come here, they go, "This is the Cadillac Style Decoy. That dictated by flat bottom, ice sweeping curve, and how it swam." The big thing was they got fish. That was sold back in the Depression. Now it's the work of artists. We asked for a proclamation. What we want to do is have a day in the park or of Carlton's to begin with, where we can all gather and disseminate this information and have the carvers that exist today and talk about this. It's a great heritage for the city, and it's a great city. And just here would just compliment yourself. And thank you for taking the time and let us come before you.
Your proclamation. Thank you.
You will be hearing from us, like, we'll have some meetings, and we'll be saying something, it's the hardest one for Carlton's.
That's fantastic. Wonderful.
Did you make that vase?
Yes. This is another, when you're talking about, we're sort of passing the mantle, let me talk a little bit. This here was made by my 14-year-old son, first in the state. So this is not a decoy, but it's a fish that he carved.
I was gonna say, what size of a fish does that catch?
That's just a carving. He calls it his own refish. Hopefully, it's a thing about Cadillac. That's part of the passing on of, that's one of our objectives and one of our goals.
Beautiful.
And we're still working on that.
Look at that. So he's 14 years old?
Carlton, or Oscar made bases, and when you talk about, this is what, this is not, these aren't put on there, they're carved on there. It's a solid piece of wood, and they're carved. I did that one. It took me two months to make that.
That is beautiful.
And that's some of the work that he did, and that's some of the things that we're passing on to future generations.
Beautiful. What kind of wood do you use?
Michigan white pine.
White pine.
Yeah. We had them down to the Arts Fair over the weekend. They got a great reception on them.
Mr. Nelson, could you share with the city council about the value of some of Oscar Peterson's work, the auction that you referenced?
Yeah, we were down to St. Clair, Illinois, and they have an auction down there. This is a national decoy. At the auction, they had a plaque. It was of a pheasant, two pheasants and a pear tree, and that sold for $123,000. So it was.
Wow.
A vase like that, if you had one of those bases and you could find one for sale, you're probably looking at $35,000, $40,000, maybe even more for it. One thing that existed here, nobody's been able to find, is a Carl, or Carl, I forgot, Oscar carved a Viking ship, and they used to be up in the old high school. And they come up missing. Now, they may be around town, if somebody wants to bump into one of those, I think you could get a great chunk of money for that.
I wonder where those went.
They're probably around here.
I'm sure they are.
I get calls every so often from people who've got them, and they want somebody to, you know, honestly give them an opinion on his work. I don't collect them. I'm not dealing in them. I just, I want...
Don't you get excited when you get those calls?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I do. But I give an honest answer. If they're worth $9,000, that's why I don't try to buy it for $150 and sell it.
Right. Yeah. Very nice. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, that moves us on to communications. Sandy?
Yes, the first request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harris and Cass on August 17th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the Cadillac Rotary Summer Concerts.
I need to probably ask for recusal from this on Sunday when I made the request.
Okay, we'll need a motion to recuse Councilmember Bowman.
I'll make it. Go ahead. I'll make that motion.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Mineheart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes.
So who are you going to be having at this concert?
On August 17th, that is Luke Winslow King Band.
Nice. Another local.
All right. All right, I'd like to make the motion to approve the closure of Lake Street from Harris to Cass on August 17th of this year, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM for the Cadillac Rotary Summer Concert.
I'll support that. Sandy, could we have a roll call?
House Member Shippers?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mineheart?
Yes.
Mayor Folkin?
Yes. Sorry.
The next request is for the closure of Lake Street from Harris to Cass from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and approval of a beverage tent from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM on August 6, 2016, for the Second Annual Depot Music Show. for the Second Annual Depot Music Fest.
Where's the, is the beverage tent going to be located, on the street or up in the park, on this one, do you know?
I think I saw a picture somewhere down in the, oh, here it is. It's mostly at the pavilion. Yeah, it's down at the pavilion side this side. Yeah, off to the side.
Okay, that's where it was last time.
Next page.
One more.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street from Harris to Cass from 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and to approve a beverage tent from 1:00 PM to 11:00 PM on August 6, 2016 for the Second Annual Depot Music Fest.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Spohm?
Yes.
Will file?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Next request is the item that was added to the agenda, is the request for the closure of the Amvet's parking lot east side from 10:00 AM to 12:30 PM on July 31, 2016 for the Lions Motorcycle Ride.
What parking lot is that?
It's going to be the Farmer's Market Lot.
Oh.
In July?
And that's a Sunday?
Yes, it's a Sunday.
Make a motion to approve the request from the Amvet for the parking lot closure on July 31st.
From the Lions Club.
Them too. No, sorry, for the Lions Club.
All right, support.
Could we have a roll call, please?
House Member will file?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Spohm?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have one appointment, a reappointment this evening. It's being requested to approve the reappointment of Mike Dolak to the Cadillac Housing Commission for a five-year term to expire on July 19, 2021.
All right, I'll make that motion to approve the reappointment of Mike Dolak to the Cadillac Housing Commission for a five-year term that will expire on July 19 of 2021. Support.
I think we should note the fact that Mike has been a member of this, he'll be in his 10th year as a member of this board. So that's really wonderful volunteerism right there. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Meinhardt?
Yes.
Sherper?
Yes.
Spohm?
Yes.
Will file?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
We'll take this to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The City of Cadillac has sanitary sewer infrastructure located along Cadillac's eastern border in the vicinity off of Crosby Road that was installed in 2003 to primarily serve the southern and eastern residential areas of the city. The infrastructure includes a couple of miles of pipe along with two upgradable lift stations. The east line, or excuse me, east side sewer system still has the capacity to serve these areas today, even with the inclusion of some new commercial development. However, the Michigan Department of Environmental Requiring is requiring us to upgrade that infrastructure over a defined period of time that's within the DCA itself. The DCA defined period of time is by July of 2017, and the agreement before you stipulates that along with the timeline and the process. By upgrading this infrastructure, it will provide the city with the ability to accommodate additional residential and commercial growth that will hopefully happen over a period of time in that area.
What's what cost?
I would ask Jeff Dietlin to give that estimate.
Approximately $350,000.
Is that in the budget this year?
That was not in the budget this year at all. It'd be something we'd have to accommodate with our budget, so.
And it comes out of the water and sewer fund?
Most definitely.
Yep.
So this wasn't planned?
Correct.
Can we talk about, we didn't know that we were going to have to do this?
We did not. We did not know that this upgrade was going to be needed to be done in this short period of time. We knew eventually that the system would likely need to be upgraded to accommodate future growth. However, the MDEQ is requiring that it's done in a smaller timeframe than what we had anticipated eventually would be something that would have to be done. The benefit to having it done, obviously, is that it will provide the necessary infrastructure for future growth and development. So while the city would need to make an investment in the short term, the long term, it'll pay off.
Then unless there's other discussion, I'll make a motion to authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to sign the district compliance agreement as presented.
Support.
Are there any more questions? Doesn't sound like we're hitting the right.
Right, with the compliance agreement. Nothing you can do about it.
Okay. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Sherper?
Yes.
Spohm?
Yes.
Will file?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
That was the only thing on the Manager's Report this evening.
Our Finance Director has some good news to share.
Oh, okay.
I believe.
Always good news.
Always good news, yes.
Eat some, knock it out.
Some that came together about 5:20 today, so I'm sorry you didn't have any for this.
Is this replacing what we had in our packet?
Yeah, this would be a replacement.
So what's the good news?
All right, so the good news is we opened or received proposals today for a bond sale, and the rates range from 2.17% up to 2.55%. As a caveat, the 2.17% included an extra cost that raised that up to about 2.2%, just under 2.2, 2.19 something. That low bidder was not a local bank, that was a bank out of North Carolina, has some branches in Ohio, I guess, and Pennsylvania. The low, the next low bidder was a local bank, and so pursuant to our local preference purchasing policy, they were contacted and offered the ability to match that low quote, and they chose to do so. So that was Mercantile Bank, that was the second low bidder. We did receive bids from two other local banks, First Merit and Chemical. They weren't, they weren't the lower, the second low with the opportunity, but Mercantile was, and they have chosen to match that. So it looks like we will be awarding it to Mercantile Bank. What the resolution does, basically, it sets parameters for the bond. So I'm going to draw your attention to paragraph number four. So the parameters of the bonds that are set in paragraph number four basically say, these will be, they can be either serial bonds or term bonds, meaning they can mature over time, or they can mature all at once, 15 years in the future. Most likely, they'll be serial bonds, where we'll pay a little bit off each year. They'll, final maturity shall be no later than 15 years, that's the length of the amortization that we've been talking about right along. The bonds shall bear interest at a rate not exceeding 5%. Again, since these proposals were just opened today, this was basically as concrete as we can get for the resolution. And then the payments will begin November 1st. So the, along with a lot of kind of legalese boilerplate language, the resolution goes on to basically authorize the Mayor and the City Manager to sign a sale order once the final terms have been finalized, and that's working with our placement agent, RW Baird out of Traverse City, and the low bidder, because there are some options that we can finalize, but it'll all be at a total not to exceed interest cost in that 2.19% range. So, and then the only other thing that I wanted to point out on the authorizing resolution is paragraph 19, it's on page eight of the resolution. And that will say, the Series 2016 bonds shall be sold to Mercantile Bank. So kind of a win-win. Good low interest rate, a bit lower than I even anticipated, and benefiting a local bank.
That was the good news, both of those meetings.
Yep.
That's good news.
If all goes well, we should have these funds within a week or so, and then we're going to start spending them. So we're going to do, probably get started on some spending as far as, hopefully get some projects built before the winter hits. If not, we're going to have a bunch of them ready to go as soon as the, as soon as the spring comes. Brian and Newhoff will be involved assisting Bruce, our engineer, in his one-man engineering office, they'll provide some assistance with some of that. The schedule, most likely, the starting schedule will be pursuant to year one of the Capital Improvement Program. Those are the streets that are in the budget. So if you're interested in specifically what streets those are, you can look in the budget or year one of the CIP, both of which you received hard copies of and are available on the website. So that's subject to some change in fluidity as needs arise or some new priorities are made, but we'll keep you well informed of where we are with all that stuff.
Getting a low interest rate, pretty impressive, not much money.
Yeah, that's a really good rate. That's a really good rate, yep.
Yep. And I'm really glad that we're able to partner with somebody that's in our community.
Yeah, for sure, yep. And again, a third of this will be sponsored or supported by captured tax revenues from the DDA.
Yeah.
Yep, so you will see in the next meeting or two, an agreement to approve that will basically make the pledge of those revenues from the DDA. You'll see that coming up.
Nice we can move ahead with these projects.
Okay.
All right, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution to authorize issuance of general obligation limited tax bonds, Series 2016.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Member Sherper?
Yes.
Spohm?
Yes.
Will file?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
All right, and this evening, we also have the minutes of the Downtown Development Authority Meeting that was held on May 9th, as well as the Webster County Airport Authority Meeting that was held on June 8th. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to come forward, we do ask you to limit it to three minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. And does anyone have anything for good or the evening?
I do, Mayor.
Okay.
A couple of things. The Mayor's Youth Council will be meeting on Wednesday at 4 o'clock here. And also, my young grandson, Virgil Davis, who is here, was going to have public comment, but he asked me to speak if he chickened out. With all of the interest with Pokemon Go, he's been noticing that there've been reports of people not honoring public property or private property, and that it causing some problems. So he wanted me to say, tell me if I'm right or wrong, he wanted me to say that everyone needs to be respectful of people's private property, and if it's a question on whether it's private property, to perhaps post that it's private property to keep people from trespassing while playing this really fun game.
I have a few items. I'd like to thank Dave Reiser for being here tonight and providing the comments that he did. And his involvement with local government's really important. It's really good to get feedback from people like him, and it's my understanding that he was one of the original authors of the city charter that we're currently using. So it's so nice to have him still involved with, and paying attention to the policy process here. I really appreciate that. It's really good to see Harry Yonkman here. It's been such a long time, and I'm glad you're back, just wanted to add that. And we tonight provided a street closure for Rotary Summer Concert in August, but I want to remind the community about the Rotary Summer Concert that's coming up the end of July. On Friday night, July 29th, we're going to have a double concert with the Sweetwater Warblers and with Jeremy Kittle, the Jeremy Kittle Trio. So it's going to be an excellent night of music. And then, as we mentioned before, on August 17th, the Luke Winslow King Band. And, you know, Luke is the hometown, what do they call him, the Cadillac Kid, and he's lots of fun to listen to, too. So we've got some really good rotary concerts coming up. And I live over by Division Street, West Division, that's been going through quite a bit of construction lately, and I'm wondering if the City Manager could provide us with an update on that project, because I'm not sure if it's been stalled or not, but a little update on it would be appreciated. Thank you.
I can do that now?
That would be great.
Sure. It's my understanding that it's the same contract you're working on, Cobb Street, sorry.
And they can't be in two places at once?
Can't be.
Oh.
Uh-huh. So as soon as they're done with that, then they'll come back and do the next overlayment. I have the same question myself this morning, as you know, I live out that way, too.
Well, yeah, yesterday, we kind of looked at it and thought, I wonder if we can drive down it or not?
Then you can. It's safe to drive down. We're encouraging folks that don't require that local access to, you know, the side streets to still detour around, but it is, it is a safe driving surface.
Do we know when that project is going to be completed?
I don't know the date, but it should be.
Oh, it does.
Does anyone know it?
I happened to speak to the engineer today, as a matter of fact. So he is telling me that the first week of August, they should be ready to put a topcoat on Cobb Street. And when that equipment is in town and they're hauling asphalt from their plant, I think it's in Traverse City, that they're going to do, be able to do both of those things at the same time. So we're looking at the first week of August, if we say before the end of the second week of August, that's probably a, hopefully, an under-promise, over-performed type of thing, where we're still a couple weeks out yet. So they're trying to do all the paving in conjunction with each project, so that's the latest word that I got this afternoon from the engineer.
Well, I've been treating that Cobb Street construction as an adventure, so every day I take a different way to work, because I can't go the normal way. So I drive around different parts of the city to get to work up behind the hospital, so it's kind of neat.
Yeah, yeah. Same issue over there. Okay, so I guess we'll wait for a while.
Good. I just wanted to say this evening, I wanted to talk about this weekend in Cadillac. For anybody that was down in the park, I think that every one of us has to feel like it's just a new day in this community. And, you know, from the Arts Festival, you know, there were like 30 new vendors at the Arts Festival this year, and people were talking. there were like 30 new vendors at the arts festival this year, and people were talking about all of the wonderful things that are happening in Cadillac, and being there for the dedication of the Rotary Pavilion and seeing past and present Rotarians standing there so proudly, at the investment and the difference that they've made in this community. I was incredibly proud to be able to be up there and be a part of it this weekend, and just hats off to this community for collaborating and having that vision and coming together and working together to create something really special for the future of this city, because I'm really proud of it.
Thank you, Mayor Filkins. I just, I wanted to mention that it was one of the best art fairs that I had ever been to. It was right here in Cadillac. I mean, it was amazing, and I've been to a lot of art fairs and craft shows, and this was really, really good. Very high caliber, very nice, and congratulations to that group for doing such a fantastic job with that.
I ran into a couple of ladies from Ann Arbor, and the Ann Arbor Art Show, I think, is the same weekend as ours, but this year, theirs is next weekend.
Yes.
So these ladies were in town, and I ran into them because they were looking for a purse, person, and so I helped them find it, and we had a nice conversation, and I ran into them again later, and they shared with me how wonderful they thought this arts festival was, because it was just the right size. It was wonderful, and it wasn't so big and so overwhelming, and they, they just appreciated the community and the whole atmosphere of what was going down, on down in the park on Saturday, and they were very complimentary of our community, so that was great. The other thing I wanted to mention, because people are asking, you know, is there gonna be a regular schedule for the movies? And so I would like somehow for us to get it out there in the community that we would really welcome organizations, groups, or businesses to step forward, and if, if anyone wants to sponsor a movie, there were a lot of wonderful families and people in the park on, on Saturday evening that, or excuse me, Friday evening, that would absolutely come out and enjoy it if you could sponsor a movie for Cadillac, so. And then I would assume we're gonna set up the schedule here at the city like we do with the Pavilion and work it through. So do we know anything more about how that's all gonna happen?
Regarding movies?
Movies.
But, no, I mean, just to what you said, if there's a, if there's a group or an organization that would like to rent the Pavilion, the Pavilion now has those amenities built into them, so.
Right.
Whereas before, it was just essentially a stage and a sound system. Now there's a stage and a sound system and a screen and a, and a projector.
How can we get, how can we get that word out to people who might like to sponsor a movie?
Well, in addition to word of mouth, I would say contacting our local service organizations would be a good opportunity, I think.
Okay.
See if there is a sponsor.
Okay.
All right. I think something to consider with that is that, you know, the Pavilion gets booked early on, but things are done at 9 o'clock at the Pavilion. So the, but a movie doesn't start till almost 10 o'clock because of us being, because of daylight, so it could be something even on a night when there's something else, have a movie after an event.
Right, and, and most often, with the exception of, I think, the Freedom Festival, the festivals are dawn at 5 o'clock on a Saturday, so there could still be a movie on Saturday night in the park, right?
It would be, I think what we're looking for is a partnering organization, somebody who can do some of the, because it's not, it does take some time, and it takes some, some effort, and there is a licensing fee that's required, so it's not something where we can just go down to the video store, download a video.
No, I know.
And play it, so people need to understand that.
It was a few hundred dollars, I believe.
Yeah, well, it was more than that, yeah.
It was one of the few.
Yeah. So it costs a little bit of money, but I know that there are businesses that would like to sponsor some, and they'd like to sponsor some concerts. I personally feel like there's an opportunity for a new organization in this town to kinda take over some, and, because you need, I'm gonna say manpower, even though that seems to be gender-specific, you need person power, you need somebody to devote hours to this, and it does take quite a bit of time, so.
Maybe former film guild members.
There's a job there for somebody or a volunteer opportunity, yeah.
Well, and we have, I've had this conversation with a couple of different people now, but I think it would be really wonderful when I spend time down in the park and see what, what is being created there. I think that we have an opportunity within our community to come up with, you see in a bigger city that like Wolf Trap out in Virginia, where they actually have an event staff, and it's all volunteers. So, you know, when we think about our volunteer groups that we have, like, you know, all of our volunteer groups for the city, you know, couldn't we create another volunteer organization within the city that handles things like that? And has people down there invest on an event weekend who are knowledgeable of, you know, questions that are gonna be asked, they're gonna know the resource that can help take care of that and answer questions. So I think that if we were thoughtful about it, we could probably find people in this community who would enjoy doing something like that. You know, and they can set their committee up with a chairperson and a vice chair, or however they wanna handle it, but the people that would come forward are the people who enjoy those kinds of things, and who enjoy people, and then it would take it off the city staff to have to manage all of that stuff.
And they could go out and seek out organizations that would like to sponsor.
Absolutely, absolutely, and they can, you know, work with Dan Wilson or whoever on the sound. They will know what they need for that event, and so then, when people are planning events, they will go to that group and say, "This is what we're planning." So what do you think about that?
That's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea to put that out there like you just did, and to get people talking about it.
Okay, good. Okay.
Well, I was, you guys have basically covered what I was gonna say anyway, but I'd like to just chime in a little bit here. I wanted to share Dave Reiser's thoughts and thank Council Member Spohman for the work you did on Pavilion. We've had two big events since our last meeting. We've had the Freedom Festival and the Arts Festival, and it was fun to go down there and see all the excitement in the community about what was going on and see the new Pavilion being used. I actually got to play in it myself, and it's a great facility, and everybody, everybody's is loving what we're doing here, and to see what's going on in the park and all that, it's, I know we're moving in the right direction. The things that we're doing are a good thing, because everybody, I got a lot of comments about, you know, and that's the way that that area should be used, and improving it the way we are is definitely the right thing we're doing here, so it's been really fun to see what's going on down there.
Yeah, I get the same comments about the Pavilion and that. I was surprised that we had as big a turnout for Friday night as we did with the weather the way it was, so that's a good sign.
Right, and think what we're gonna get on a night where we've got really nice weather.
It was finally windy at home.
It was. Those people were troopers, but, but they, you know, they made history. They were at the very first movie in the park in Cadillac, maybe.
Well, it was, sure. Like during the dedication, I made the comment, I came down, I just came up from downstate, so I had on a pair of shorts and a polo shirt, and it was cold, and I looked out over the people that were there for the dedication, there were like five people sitting in orange, and I said, "Look, even the deer hunters came," 'cause it felt like deer shit out there to me, so, yeah, but people even came out just for the dedication, which was nice to see.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Okay, well, we need to go into closed session, so we're gonna need a motion to do that, and I believe we're gonna invite somebody into, yes, closed session with us, and it's in the, in the statement.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consider the purchase or lease of real property pursuant to MCL 15.268, letter D, and to consult with the city attorney regarding trial and/or settlement strategy in the case of City of Cadillac versus Charter Township of Carrington, case number 16-26714-CZ. We're going to invite Jeff Dietlin, Director of Utilities, and Mike Hamner accordingly to this meeting.
Support.
Andy, can we have a roll call?
House Member will file?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shapiro?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.